Thank you for attending the meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please call the roll.
Scott Dracy.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
Faulkner.
Here.
Atwood.
Here.
Ballard.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four is the adoption of our agenda. May I have a motion for the adoption of our agenda?
I so motion.
A motion by Ms. Amber.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Atwood. Please call the roll.
Ballard.
Yes.
Atwood.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Scott Dracy.
Yes. Item five is the approval of minutes. The approval for the committee meeting of December 12th, 2017, the special board of education meeting, December 12th, 2017, and the regular board meeting on December 21st, 2017. May I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
So moved.
Mr. Faulkner? May I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Ballard? Second? May I call the roll, please?
Faulkner?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Scott Dracy.
Yes. Next item are our presentations. Dr. Sabo.
Thank you, Madam President. This is an important month here in Norwood City Schools and all around the state of Ohio that you see from our poster over here. This month is the Ohio School Boards Association is celebrating School Board Recognition Month to build awareness and understanding of the vital function of an elected board of education and how it plays in our society. School Board Recognition Month honors the members in Ohio's more than 700 cities, exempted villages, local and vocational boards of education, and educational service centers, governing boards for their commitment to provide quality public education to Ohio's schoolchildren. So Norwood City Schools is joining with other districts throughout the state to recognize the important contributions of school board members and how they help to improve their communities. Ohioans benefit every day from the dedicated energies and the countless hours devoted by a group of more than 3,400 men and women across the state. And these are public servants that are elected to serve by local citizens and receive very little compensation for their tireless efforts. And our local school board members are Sherry Scott Dracy, Tim Bryant, Scott Faulkner, Amber Ballard, and Brandon Atwood. And we want to thank you for your service, and we'd like for each of you to come forward and receive your certificate. And of course, we have to get a photo. Thank you so much, Board of Education, for all you have done and all that you're about
All right, Dr. Sabo. The next item are our student Rising Stars for January.
That's right. That's what we're here really for, right? So students, when I call your name, I'm going to ask that you come up and get a very special certificate from our board president, Mrs. Sherry Scott Dracy. And while you're coming up, I'll read some very special notes that your teachers have written about you. You'll see yourself on YouTube in a couple days, and of course, that'll be a video of this event. And then you'll also find yourself in the Norwood Star. Our very first recipient is Norwood High School's Rising Star Students for January are Ryan Arthur and Nalita Segras Bellama. Ryan Arthur is a funny and delightful young woman who has proved her leadership skills in newspaper this year. As design editor, she's responsible for planning and designing bi-monthly issues of the school newspaper. Her peers appreciate her laid-back personality and well-placed wit, but they have seen it never comes at the cost of getting the job done. "I have been particularly impressed with her commitment to a service project the class took on this December," notes her teacher, Mrs. Martin. "In the spirit of the holidays, Ryan wanted to organize a school service project. She took the lead on partnering with a local nonprofit to help provide diapers for a Cincinnati baby in need. Under her leadership, the school collected and met their goals for the diaper drive, making one family's holiday a little brighter. Congratulations to Ryan, a shining example of a rising star. It's students like Ryan that make Norwood City Schools great." Nalita Segras Bellama, nominated by Mr. Lawler. He would like to nominate Nalita because she's an extremely hard worker who always strives to do her very best in class. She's also a model classmate who always leads by example and models excellent behavior and study habits. Nalita is always respectful of her fellow classmates and is willing to lend a helping hand to her peers. Nell is also a valuable member of the Norwood Lady Indians soccer team. And he says he's lucky to have her a student in class, and she's truly an example of a Norwood Rising Star, and it's students like Nalita that make Norwood City Schools great. Norwood Middle School Rising Star Students for January are Kaylee Burns and Xavier Hoover. Norwood Middle School is proud to announce Kaylee Burns as the Rising Star Student for the month of January as an eighth grader at the middle school. Kaylee makes it her personal goal to demonstrate all of the school's pride and peace builder characteristics and the way she consistently treats everyone around her with respect. Kaylee habitually works to the very best of her ability and sets high expectations for her academic goals. Plus, this stellar student is an avid reader. In addition, Kaylee has set some short and long-term goals for herself. She plans to earn straight A's throughout her middle school career and successfully graduate with honors from high school with a class of 2022. Afterwards, she plans to attend college to earn a law degree. Eventually, Kaylee would like to work as a lawyer and live in an area close to the beach with her family. Norwood Middle School is expecting great things from Kaylee Burns in the future, and it's people like her that make Norwood Middle School a Hall of Fame school and Norwood City Schools great. Norwood Middle School is proud to announce Xavier Hoover as the seventh grade Rising Star for the month. Xavier sets an excellent example by demonstrating peace builder pride, digital dignity, and Norwood pride each and every day at school. Academically, he excels in his subject areas of math and social studies, enjoys playing basketball and football, and demonstrates the characteristics of a good friend and an outstanding student. Xavier credits his success in school to his ability to focus in class and setting high standards to achieve high levels. Xavier participates in the school's athletic programs and orchestra. Certainly, his involvement in Norwood activities and in the community demonstrates his commitment to being a positive influence at school. Xavier wants to model the true meaning of a student athlete throughout his entire stay here at Norwood Middle School, and eventually, he wants to go to college and earn a degree in education. He hopes to be a role model for other students in Norwood City Schools. Norwood is expecting big things from Xavier in the future. It's students like Xavier that make Norwood Middle School and a Hall of Fame school and Norwood City Schools great. Congratulations, Xavier. Sharpsburg Elementary and Primary School's Rising Star Students for January are Juliana Craig and Renine Kaisem. Juliana Craig has proven to be an absolute joy to educate. Juliana is self-motivated, success-driven, intelligent, and a friend to everyone she meets. This year, Juliana has flourished in all of her studies, providing to be a thoughtful reader, a communicative writer, and an adept mathematician. However, in one area above all others, Juliana Craig has quickly made a reputation for herself this year: engineering. As our year has progressed in science, multiple opportunities to hone our engineering skills have been afforded to the students of Norwood. And out of the eight engineering students, in the fifth grade, Juliana Craig and her group have won six times, and they came in second just once. Her skills as a designer and builder have become so well-known amongst the fifth grade that during a recent rocket building competition, about eight groups decided the only chance they had to beat her was to just copy her design. While they were able to copy the basic design, they were unable to copy the craftsmanship, the care, and the attention to detail that Juliana incorporates into all of her efforts. And while the copied rockets did fine, the Juliana Craig original was the first rocket to ever leave the school grounds completely. Her windmill's top speed blew last year's record away, and her sailboat sank all the competitors except for one, which was bested by her two-tenth of a second. Juliana's strong character, brilliant mind, and unwavering determination are certainly going to carry her onto amazing feats. And her teacher has every confidence that this Rising Star is going to have the same meteoric trajectory, the rocket she built in the fifth grade, and sent out of sight. So it's students like Juliana that make Norwood City Schools great. She almost makes me want to change our mascot from the Indians to the Rockets. So we have Renine Kaisem. She is an amazing young lady. Did I say it right, Renine?
No.
Good, good. I practiced, I want you to know. She is such a great team player, willing to help members of her group and keep everyone on track. Renine is always on task and choosing to work on assignments that will help her grow as a learner. She has elected to do optional research projects and presented her project to the class and will also choose to use free time or choice time to make sure her work is the best it can be. Renine takes advantage of every opportunity to improve her work and grow as a reader and writer. Her teacher regularly sees her using the new things that they practice in class during her independent work. Renine has a great work ethic and an incredibly positive attitude. Both these things will serve her well, and it's students like Renine that make Norwood City Schools great. Norwood View Elementary School's Rising Star Students for January are Christian Garcia and Mason Moore. Christian Garcia is a sixth grade Rising Star Student from Norwood View. Christian is a hard-working student who's also cheerful and positive. His attitude is contagious, and he can brighten anyone's day. He tries his best in the classroom and is helpful to his teachers. We can count on Christian to be a peace builder, and we know that he truly embodies the peace builder characteristics. He gives his best effort, no matter the situation, and his dedication is impressive. He takes responsibility for his own actions and schoolwork, ensuring that he does the best that he can. We're proud to have Christian as our Rising Star for January, and we know that he will always rise to the challenge as he continues through Norwood City Schools. It's students like Christian that make Norwood City Schools great. The kindergarten Rising Star for the month of January is Mason Moore. Mason is a hard-working, caring, and very intelligent young girl. Mason has made huge academic gains since starting kindergarten in August. Mason is a class leader. She's quick to follow instructions, and she excels in all that she does. Mason is also a problem solver. She will continue to work on an assignment in and out of the class until they are complete. Mason comes to school each day with a smile on her face and a happy heart. She is a bright light in our classroom and truly loves life. We are proud and honored to have Mason in our kindergarten class, and we appreciate all the ways she helps others feel welcome and how she makes Norwood View proud each day. Students like Mason are what make Norwood City Schools great. Williams Avenue Elementary School Rising Star Students for January are Jack Jones and Carly White. The kindergarten team and Mr. Wiles would like to nominate their Rising Star for the month, and that student is their friend, Jack Jones. Jack is a kindergartner in Mr. Wiles' room at Williams Avenue. Jack Jones is a leader in and out of the classroom, and he always strives to do his best. He's a friend to all and is always there to lend a helping hand. Jack loves to read, create fun math facts, and play football at recess. Jack's favorite color is red, and his favorite animal is a bird. Jack wishes to pursue a career on the SWAT team when he gets older. Jack loves mac and cheese and says goodbye to his loving mother every day before entering the school building. Jack is a wonderful example of what makes Norwood Schools great, and you will not find a more gentle soul than that of Jack Jones. Congratulations, Jack. The art, music, and PE teachers at Williams Avenue Elementary are proud to nominate sixth grader Carly White for the January Rising Star Award. Carly demonstrates so many traits of a great student. She's responsible, she gives her best effort, and has high expectations for herself. She's a role model for chant behavior and our peace builder initiative. Her personality also makes her a lot of fun to be around. Carly's smile brightens the room, she's positive, energetic, and can get along with anyone. Carly also stays involved with extracurricular activities, both inside and outside of school, including playing the trumpet in the band and being a talented baton twirler. She's a prime example of an all-around great member of our community and what makes Norwood Schools great. Parents, we're going to shake their hands, and then we will put them in a nice group here so we can take a great group photo. And then after that, they're going to go out into the hallway, and you'll follow Ms. Cornelius. She's standing here. She's going to take some great photos of them, some of those that you'll probably see This is a time when we take a little break in our meeting, so you can follow Ms. Cornelius out into the hallway, and she'll take some great family photos for you. Thank you for coming.
All right. Onto item seven, the education committee report. Ms. Ballard?
All right. Under letter A, approval for the Norwood High School Program of Study. I haven't been given the exhibits for that. It says exhibits.
The exhibits came in the email that you got?
They were attached to the committee.
I'm sorry, I don't think I had that printed. If you know what it is and would like to cover that for me, I'd be more than happy to hear that right.
Well, I don't have it with me either. I think Brandon might have it. Do you have it?
The item A on there, the program of study, is like a 136-page document by itself, so I did not print that one.
It's delivered by our curriculum director. Would you like to get up and recite our?
That's the one that I got while I was in New York. I didn't get a chance to read through 136 pages of documents. So I do not have that at this time. I can move to item B. Item B is approval for the elementary 2018 and 19 parent-teacher conferences, which the dates will be Monday, November 5th, Thursday, November 8th, Monday, February 11th, and that's into next year, 2019, Thursday, February 14th of 2019. Item C, we have an approval of field trips. Do you want me to read individually each and every one of those field trips, or can we collectively say that we have read that list?
You can collectively say.
I can say we have read that list. All right.
And have you made a motion for approval of these items?
I would like to move that we approve those items.
I'll second that motion.
And to be clear, we are talking A through?
A through C. C covers Winter Guard Field Trips, Silhouettes Clinics and Competitions, and an Orchestra Field Trip as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ballard?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes.
And, Madam President, I went a little fast there on the discussion, so I had my questions, but I apologize for that.
That's okay. All right. Onto the next item is item eight, personnel. Dr. Sabo.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have a few things for consideration, and they are numbers one through four. Number one being student assistant educational aid. Two is the certified supplemental contract from 172018. And we have some people activity contracts for athletics. And then a correction to the agenda.
All right. I'll make a motion for approval of items A, one, two, three, and four. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Bryant.
Is there any discussion?
Any discussion?
Scott Dracy?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Next item is the policy committee report. Mr. Atwood?
Thank you, Madam President. We do have one item on the agenda tonight that's going to require our approval, and I'll be making a motion for that approval. It is a change to the graduation requirements for the high school, and what we're doing there is we are changing the social studies requirement by one credit, and then we're also adding some additional language for the statutory requirements for graduation. So I think we've all reviewed those, and if there are no objections to those, I'd like to make that motion for approval of this change to the graduation requirements.
May I have a second? I'll second. Second by Ms. Ballard. Any discussion?
When does that go into effect? This year's graduation or for the next school year?
No, that's this year, correct.
For this year's.
Yeah, it's for this year.
Please call the roll.
Atwood?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes. Next item is Building and Grounds Committee. Mr. Bryant?
Yes, Madam President. With the board's approval, I'd like to make a motion for the following items: Norwood Police Department Social Service Exam for February 7th, 6 to 9 in Norwood High School Cafeteria, Norwood Police Department Agility Test for February 10th at Shea Stadium, and Ohio Valley Football Official Association for the Mini Auditorium, August 6, 13, 20, 27, and September 10, 17, and 24.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Bryant for approval of use of facilities. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Atwood. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Bryant?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes. The next item is the Finance Committee Report. Mr. Faulkner?
Thank you, Madam President. By recommendation to committee, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of item A, the Approval of Financial Report for December 2017. That'll be the Treasurers Report and Bank Reconciliation, the FINS Sum Report, the ABF Sum Report, the Check Register, and then the Tax Budget 2019 Post-Public Hearing, and item B, Approval of OSBA Annual Dues of Memberships.
All right. I have a motion for approval from Mr. Faulkner. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Bryant. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. I do have one item for discussion. I know I had spoken with Mr. Strausser about this earlier, but I think it would be important to be able to take a look at some of these financial documents, especially the check register, and be able to see how those individual checks affect the financial summary, so what funds those go into. Looking at the documents as they are now, it's hard to make that connection unless you know what you're looking at. That's my only concern with those documents, otherwise, they're good.
Sure. And we're working on a report that will meet that need.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes. Next item is hearing on the public. We have no requests. The next item would be board announcements. Do we have any board announcements?
I have one.
Okay.
I had the pleasure of doing a tour last week of the elementary school special needs classrooms and preschools, and look at all their programming needs and how they're utilizing the classroom space, and some of the uses that will come with the construction that's going to be happening. And I have plans to do a tour coming up soon for the middle school and high school as well as do the same classrooms. And if anybody would like to join me on those tours, that'd be wonderful. I highly recommend doing a tour with your classrooms, meet your principal. You know, it'd be kind of fun to look at those special needs classrooms with a different eye. I had a really wonderful experience. I got lots of hugs from lots of sticky hands, and it was a really good experience for me. So I highly recommend doing it.
Thank you. Next item is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Sabo?
Thank you, Madam President. We have wonderful news to share. Norwood High School is so very proud of their concentrated effort to support our student athletes. They recognize while providing rigorous coursework, sometimes athletic eligibility is a barrier to student participation. So teachers and administration have worked to provide supports to athletes and keep academic studies the primary focus. The academic team for the high school continues to represent us, as we are in a new league. They found the competition on a college campus, namely Cincinnati State, very exciting. They have a team of 12 students with a varsity and a junior varsity team, and their season has been extended by two months due to the new league, but they're happy to compete longer. The boys swim team dual meet record is 18-0, and last week, they broke many records. And students earn personal best times, both boys and girls. So we wish them continued success. Norwood Middle School is proud to continue their effort to increase school attendance. Students are responding to the personal effort made on the part of teachers and administration, and they report their new efforts are showing in improved attendance. Williams Elementary has used their building leadership team to develop positive behavior supports, posters, to guide students in their daily decision-making, and they report their before and after-school club program participation is at an all-time high. Norwood View is proud that their building leadership team is working to create and develop a common language of terms to be used in math and reading across grade levels. Sharpsburg Elementary and Primary have developed positive behavior supports by using the acronym BE SHARP: honest, achieve, respectful, and prepared. And teachers and administration report they are using this to strengthen their already positive learning environment. Mrs. Kabesh, our middle school teacher, received a grant that she applied for from the Teaching Tolerance Educator Grant in the amount of $10,000. And these grants are made possible by the loyal supportive donors from the Southern Poverty Law Center. So selected projects will be featured on the Teaching Tolerance website and magazine. And Mrs. Kabesh intends her project to increase student speaking skills, somewhat like TED Talks, and parent engagement. Our second set of entry doors in each building have been installed, and we are working to ensure a higher level of safety and preparing for Phase 2 of the renovations by focusing on the plans at the middle school. I do want to acknowledge that we have had inclement weather since winter break, and I want to thank our parents and our students who've been listening to the voicemails, the emails, and the texts, notifications. And just know that when determining a delay or closure, we consider if our grounds will be ready for students and faculty. We consider the weather forecast, including the wind chill, the temperature, weather advisories, roads and sidewalks in the city of Norwood. And I work with our maintenance department to judge conditions before justifying closing. So in the meantime, I hope that we are all wishing for spring. So that concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you. Next item is the Great Oaks Report. Mr. Faulkner, have you heard from our Great Oaks?
I have, yes, Madam President. They met last week. They've been going through policies. They're about a third of the way through their policies. They have named a program coordinator and have worked through that. They have two programs that they highlighted. The first is professional skills, where they teach.
The first is Professional Skills, where they teach students on how behavior and attendance corresponding prepares them for the work world. And the second's Clean for My Career, where the students commit to be drug and alcohol-free for the school year. And the parents have agreed to let Laurel Oaks administer random drug tests for the year to test them and keep them on track. That program has grown from 77 students last year to 177 students this year. And if they complete the program, they get a certificate that goes in their file, and they can present it to people when they go through interviews, the employers. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. And just to confirm, Lynn Ellis is still our representative on that board. The next item is the Avenues for Success. And I realize we failed to appoint someone for that, so we do not have any information this month, but we will make sure someone gets on that for next month. The next item is the Legislative Report, and I do not have anything to report on that. And the next item is Meeting Notifications. All meetings listed below will be held in the Board of Education meeting room, unless noted, at 2132 Williams Avenue. A, our committee meeting on Tuesday, February 6th at 5:30 will be at the Williams Avenue Cafeteria. And item B is the regular board meeting for Thursday, February 15th at 6:00 PM, held at the Norwood High School Mini Auditorium. May I have a motion to approve the meeting notifications?
I'll make a motion.
First by Mr. Bryant. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Atwood. Any discussion?
I have one quick thing. We mentioned on the December, or excuse me, on the previous meeting a couple weeks ago that we were interested in possibly touring North Norwood or maybe having a meeting there if possible. I have a contact for North Norwood. Would you like me to follow up with that?
Sure. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes.
All right. Item 21 is Executive Session. We will be going into executive. I would like to make a motion to go into Executive Session in accordance with ORC 121.22G1, the Appointment, Employment, Dismissal, Discipline, Promotion, Demotion, or Compensation of a Public Employee or Official, or the Investigation of Charges or Complaints Against a Public Employee, Official, Licensee, or Regulated Individual. Number 2, in accordance with ORC 121.22G2, the Purchase of Property for Public Purposes or for the Sale of Property at Competitive Bidding. Number 5, in accordance with ORC 121.22G5, matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations or state statutes. I have made a motion to go into Executive Session. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Faulkner. Please call the roll.
Scott Dracy?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
We are going into Executive Session at 6:34.